Good morning, HU. Good morning. How's everybody doing? Three people are doing good. Hey, everybody, give somebody a high five or a hand pound or something. Just say hi, welcome. Nice to see you. Smile with your eyes at people. A few quick announcements. I want to just welcome our Board of Trustees. They're right here. Could everybody just give a hand? And wave? Can you have everybody wave? Say hi, welcome. Everybody say welcome. All right. Thank you for all you do. You've already been prayed for this morning and we'll keep praying for you all. Thank you. Students, I want you to know, first of all, a quick announcement. We've had great response to Operation Christmas Child. A bunch of you have taken boxes and just want you to know, you can turn in your boxes to Student Life, the desk right there in the hub, starting today through the 29th. All right, so you've got a week to do that. So make sure you get your boxes filled and get those in. Well, I want to start by reading from the book of Isaiah. And here is what it says in verse eight of chapter 26. "Lord, we show our trust in you by obeying your laws. Our heart's desire is to glorify your name. He's worthy of glory and praise." And so why don't you all stand up and we're going to praise the Lord together with Jay Noyes this morning.
We sing to the God who heals. We sing to the God who saves. We sing to the God who always makes a way. 'Cause he hung up on that cross, then he rose up from that grave. My God's still rolling stones away. There's joy in the house of the Lord. There's joy in the house of the Lord today. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. There's joy in the house of the Lord. Our God is surely in this place. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. And we were the beggars, now we're royalty. We were the prisoners, now we're running free. We are forgiven, accepted, redeemed by his grace. Let the house of the Lord sing praise. We were the beggars, now we're royalty. We were the prisoners, now we're running free. We are forgiven, accepted, redeemed by his grace. Let the house of the Lord sing praise. There's joy in the house of the Lord. There's joy in the house of the Lord today. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. There's joy in the house of the Lord. Our God is surely in this place. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. There's joy in the house of the Lord. There's joy in the house of the Lord today. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. There's joy in the house of the Lord. Our God is surely in this place. And we won't be quiet. We shout out your praise. Shout out your praise.
Amen, amen. So as we continue our time in worship this morning, there were a couple verses in my quiet time, specifically this morning, that really stood out to me. I don't know why, but this week anxiety and fear for me has been like top tier. Like Satan is just coming at me this week. And it's been hard. But I was reminded of a couple different verses that I want to share with you guys. The first one is from Isaiah 41:10. It says, "Fear not, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you, I will help you, and I will uphold you with my righteous right hand." The second comes from Joshua 1:5, and it says, "No man shall be able to stand before you all the days of your life. Just as I was with Moses, so I will be with you. I will not leave you or forsake you." 1 Peter 5:7, "Cast all your anxieties on him, because he cares for you." I already said the word anxiety. That, I mean, it hit me like a two by four. And then the last one, Psalm 118 verse 6. "The Lord is on my side. I will not fear." And so I was just so reminded of God's love for me, the promises in his word that says he'll never leave us, forsake us. And so I encourage you, whatever you walked in with this morning, whatever fear or anxieties you've been struggling with, give them to God. Cast all your anxieties on him, not part, not a little bit. All your anxieties.
I love you. Oh, your mercy never fails me. All my days, I've been held in your hands. From the moment that I wake up till I lay my head, I will sing of the goodness of God. All my life, you have been faithful. All my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I love your voice. You have led me through the fire. In darkest night, you are close like no other. I've known you as a father. I've known you as a friend. And I have lived in the goodness of God. And all my life, you have been faithful. And all my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. With my life laid down, I'm surrendered now. I give you everything. Your goodness is running after, it's running after me. All my life, you have been faithful. All my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. All my life, you have been faithful. Now, all my life, you have been so, so good. With every breath that I am able, I will sing of the goodness of God. I will sing of the goodness of God. Yes, I will sing of the goodness of God. Great is thy faithfulness. Great is thy faithfulness. Morning by morning, new mercies I see. All I have needed, thy hand hath provided. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto thee. Great is thy faithfulness, Lord unto me.
Lord, I just want to come to you today and thank you. Thank you for always being with us. Thank you for being with us in the good and in the bad. I just pray that everyone in this room feels your presence with them today as they go out for the rest of the day, but for the rest of the week as well, and for the rest of their lives. I pray that they know that you're with them. And I pray that as we sit here today through chapel, that we hear what we need to hear, you know what our hearts need. In your name we pray, amen.
Also, welcome. I see some other guests, so welcome. Glad you all are here. I'm excited about this morning. Bishop Todd Fetters is going to be speaking. And the reason I'm excited is because he gets where you are, students. He understands it. He comes from a family with deep connections to Huntington University. Graduates from HU include his parents, his two brothers, his wife, his two sons, both sisters-in-law, and every niece and nephew who's ever attended college has been from here. Yeah, so that's good stuff. He mostly grew up on the edge of Huntington University campus, in the house where now the Dowden Science Hall stands. That's where he grew up. His father, Dr. Paul Fetters, was founder and dean of the Graduate School of Christian Ministries. And his closest childhood friends were the son of HU faculty or UB denominational officials. So he knows what it's like to be here. He entered HU in 1989. Played three years on the soccer team, so a shout out to the soccer team. As goalie and graduated in 1989 with a degree in Bible and religion. Two years later, received the Master of Christian Ministry degree. He's spent his entire career as a United Brethren minister. He was a pastor for 25 years in Michigan and Pennsylvania and returned to Huntington in 2013 to work at UB Global Office, National Office. He's now in his sixth year as bishop at the UB Church, which is the denomination's highest elected official. He was re-elected this summer to another four-year term. Here's why I'm excited. That's details, all right? That's his credentials. But here's why I'm excited. I'm excited because every time I've heard our bishop speak, I have come away encouraged and challenged in my faith. And I believe the same will be true for you today. So put your hands together for Bishop Todd Fetters.
Thank you, Mark, and I'm excited for your new opportunity here at Huntington University as our campus pastor and will be praying for you in that role. I did notice, and maybe you caught it, I just want to catch something. Mark introduced me as entering into Huntington University in 1989 and that I graduated in 1989. I'm that impressive. It was on the paper. So the paper doesn't lie. But, and he's right, I did grow up on the grounds of Dowden Science Hall. We were doing experiments and biological things for a long time before it was ever allowed in that building. We were wondering, does this blow up? Does that bleed? What does that smell like? A long time before it was ever allowed in there. And as far as soccer, I have one year of eligibility left. I've told the president about that. If you're looking for a 55-year-old goalie, I may not have the quickness, but I cover more goal than I ever did back in the 80s. It's my honor and privilege to be here with you this morning and to bring to you what I hope is a challenge and an encouragement to God's faithfulness. "Hear, O Israel, the Lord our God. The Lord is one. You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your strength." "Hear, O Israel, the Lord our God is one." The oneness of God is a central, essential doctrine of the church. But grasping this vast character of God and his, with just one name, is so hard to do. And thankfully, there are so many names throughout the Old and New Testaments used for God. And each name is purposed to help describe the complexity and capability that God has. But how can we grasp just even a thimbleful of this divine, sovereign, complex, capable God? Well, I think modern technology can help us out. Grab your phone. Hold it up. I don't know if you're allowed to do this, but... All right, put it down. There you go. Nice, Paul. Hey, why you have that? Why don't you grab your music player? And hold it up. Right? Great, put it down. Hold up your photo album, would you? Okay, you can put that down. How about your video recorder? Excellent. How about your GPS? You got it. How about your Bible? Now, usually when I do this in churches, some smart person holds up their real Bible to make a point about old technology and new technology. That's fine. So why you either have your phone or you have an actual Bible, turn or tap your way to Genesis 22. That would be awesome. And while you're doing that, I just simply want to bring to your attention that as impressive and as capable as this device is in doing many, many things, I want you to, and that it's in a word, multi-capable, but as smart as this device is, our God is infinitely more intelligent. We know him to be omniscient. He knows everything. We know him to be omnipresent. He is always and everywhere present. And we know him to be omnipotent. He is all-powerful. But today, I want us to think in terms of God as being omnicapable. So would you say this with me? God can do that. God can do that. One more time, God can do that. If we lock onto this theme, what we understand is that our God is capable of doing anything for anyone. Now, his help can be defined by his names. And today, I want to introduce you to one of my favorite names for God, which is Jehovah Jireh. Since Jehovah Jireh is a compound name, let me remind you who Jehovah is. It's the Hebrew name for God, Jehovah or Yahweh. And it was the personal name that God had, that God gave to Moses at the sign of the burning bush in Exodus, Chapter 3. When Moses asked God his name, he said, "I am who I am." In short, I am the God who is. Throughout Scripture, the name Jehovah refers to God who is self-existent, which means that Jehovah is sovereign. He has authority over all things. It also means Jehovah is supreme. He is superior to all other deities. And Jehovah is sufficient. He is generous with his unlimited supply of love and resources. In a word, there is no one, none, like Jehovah. As the Psalmist in verse, Chapter 148, verse 13 declares, "Let them praise the name of the Lord, for his name is excellent; his glory is above the earth and heaven." Now, who is Jehovah Jireh? Name that you may or may not be familiar with. Because there are many compound names for God stemming from this personal Jehovah. Let me give you a couple that you might be familiar with. Jehovah Nissi, the Lord our banner. Jehovah Shalom, the Lord our peace. Jehovah Rophi, the Lord our healer. Jehovah Rohe, the Lord our shepherd. That's just a list of few. And each of these names further defines God's identity through his activity with mankind. Jehovah Jireh is the compound name that has reminded the children of God for millennia that the Lord will provide. Would you just say that? The Lord will provide. The name gives us confidence that the sovereign and supreme Lord always provides sufficiently, and now I'll add the caveat, when the time is right. The best way to introduce you to Jehovah Jireh is by way of introducing you to the patriarch Abraham, who is credited with calling God by this name. We recall this historic moment by turning to Genesis 22, 1 to 14. Let me share this text with you. "Sometime later, God tested Abraham, and he said to him, 'Abraham.' He responded, 'Here I am.' Then God said, 'Take your son, your only son, whom you love, Isaac, and go to the region of Moriah. Sacrifice him there as a burnt offering on a mountain I will show you.'" "Early the next morning, Abraham got up and loaded his donkey, and he took with him two of his servants and his son Isaac. When he had cut enough wood for the burnt offering, he set out for the place that God had told him about. And on the third day, Abraham looked up and saw the place in the distance. He said to his servants, 'Stay here with the donkey, while I and the boy go over there. We will worship, and then we will come back to you.'" "Abraham took the wood for the burnt offering and placed it on his son Isaac, and he himself carried the fire and the knife. As the two of them went on together, Isaac spoke up and said to his father, 'Father,' yes, my son, Abraham replied, 'the fire and the wood are here, but where is the lamb for the burnt offering?' Abraham answered, 'God himself will provide the lamb for the burnt offering.' And the two of them went on together. When they reached the place that God had told him about, Abraham built an altar there and arranged the wood on it. He bound his son Isaac and laid him on the altar on top of the wood, and then he reached out his hand and he took..." out his hand and he took the knife to slay his son. But the angel of the Lord called out to him from heaven, "Abraham, Abraham." He replied, "Here I am." Do not lay a hand on the boy. Do not do anything to him. Now I know that you fear God, because you have not withheld from Me your son, your only son. Abraham looked up, and there in the thicket he saw a ram caught by its horns. He went over, he took the ram, he sacrificed it as a burnt offering instead of his son. So Abraham called that place. The Lord will provide. And so to this day, it is said, "On the mountain of the Lord it will be provided." I want to unpack this story with an understanding of Abraham's faith-deepening test, his personal thoughts, and the enduring testimony that he leaves. This is a tough story to hear, but hearing it pales in comparison to living it. Simply put, God tested Abraham's faith and loyalty in the most difficult way imaginable to any parent who's sitting in here today. Take your son, your only son, whom you love, and go to the region of Moriah and sacrifice him as a burnt offering. You see, early the next morning, Abraham loaded his donkey and headed for the hills with two servants and his beloved son. Abraham couldn't have denied hearing this voice. It's a voice he has been hearing quite a few times since he was 75. That's when God revealed Himself to the patriarch and entered a covenant with him that is outlined in Genesis 12, 1 through 4, where God promised through His covenant to make Abraham a great nation, to make Abraham's name great, to bless those who would bless him, to curse those who would curse him, and that all people on the earth would be blessed through Abraham. But the Lord required Abraham then to take a huge step of faith, to leave his country, to leave his own people, to leave his family and tribe, and to go to a place that God would show him. It says in Genesis 12, 4, that Abraham left as the Lord had told him to do. This time, also, Abraham responded quickly with obedience. But I imagine Abraham did a lot of thinking while walking to the mountain. The thought of sacrificing his beloved son had to be excruciating. God's command had to be bewildering. How could God take Abraham's only son, the son through whom Jehovah would promise to build this great name and this great nation? The son whom Jehovah had provided so miraculously? I'm sure he recalled the details of Isaac's birth. If you're not familiar with him, his wife Sarah was 65 and childless and barren. But they believed and they tried and tried and tried to conceive, and after 10 years of unsuccessful attempts, the couple entered a season of doubt wherein Sarah arranged a surrogacy whereby Abraham would have a child with her handmaiden, Hagar. He consented. Hagar conceived. But Ishmael was not the promised heir and provision of Jehovah that he had promised. He had promised that Sarah would have a son. So they tried again and again and again for 14 more years. And finally, Sarah, who was past any capacity to bear a child, conceived when she and Abraham were the spright ages of 89 and 99. The Lord had provided. Abraham, again, back to the traveling, he had to keep thinking while he was traveling. And on the third day, he instructed his servants, "Stay here with the donkey while I and the boy go over there. We will worship, and then we will come back to you." Well, is that cover? What is that? "We will come back to you." Maybe it was certainty. What was he thinking? I want you to know, we're not without insight here, particularly from the New Testament. The Hebrew writers puts us right inside Abraham's mind. He says this, "By faith, Abraham, when God tested him, offered Isaac as a sacrifice. He who received the promises was about to sacrifice his one and only son. Abraham reasoned..." This is what he was thinking. Abraham reasoned that God could raise the dead. And figuratively speaking, he did receive Isaac back from the dead. That tells us his frame of mind, he had given up his son, to the point even where he's over him with the weapon. Now we come to his testimony that endures today through a compound name, Jehovah Jireh. The passage says, "So Abraham called the place, the Lord will provide. And to this day, it is said, 'On the mountain the Lord it will be provided.'" The Lord will provide. This phrase must have crossed Abraham's mind a lot through the journey, and by this time in his life, God already had a track record of proving true, of providing the right thing in the right way at the right time. And Abraham had to think, if Jehovah did it before, he can certainly do it again. Yet I wonder if his sandals felt heavier and heavier with every step he took, higher up the mountain with his son. And to intensify an already intense moment, Isaac points out, "Hey Dad, where's the lamb?" We already know what Abraham was thinking, but he simply said, "The Lord will provide." It's all he knew. It's all he could believe in. It's all he counted on was the Lord will provide. And suddenly, rustling in the bushes, both father and son took notice that at the right time and the right place, the right thing showed up. God provided a lamb. And Abraham's testimony became etched in the hearts of future generation of God followers. Jehovah Jireh, the Lord our provider. See, Genesis 22 highlights the fact that the Lord has masterful eye-hand coordination. Abraham had a need, and he believed that only the Lord could meet that need, and his story beckons us to consider this and to believe this too. The Lord sees your faith through your trust and obedience and provides for your need. You're neither outside the scope of His eye or beyond the reach of His hand. My son Jordan came face-to-face with Jehovah Jireh several years ago, when he landed his dream job in sports management at Division One University, but it didn't come quickly and it didn't come easily. Lisa and I have two sons, Jordan and Quinn. Jordan is the older one of the two, and he received a business degree from Huntington University in 2013 and began applying for jobs. His true desire was to work in sports management at a Division One school, but his degree was general and his network was really small. Both factors made it difficult for Jordan to find work in college athletics. Jordan recognized that he needed a master's degree that specialized in sports management, so he applied for a program at California Baptist University in Riverside, California. We wondered, "Will the Lord provide?" He was accepted. Prayer answered, "The Lord provided." Now, he needed a job to get him through that year of school. "Would the Lord provide?" We wondered again, and Jordan applied to be a grad assistant at Cal Baptist. Brian, an athletic, assistant athletic director, took notice of Jordan's application because of the area code on Jordan's cell phone. Although our family had moved to Huntington in 2013, Jordan still had a 717 number from when we lived in central Pennsylvania. Brian, like Jordan, had grown up as a preacher's kid in central P A. He offered Jordan the grad assistant job, and once again, prayer answered, "The Lord provided." Now Jordan needed a place to live that was affordable in Southern California. He found a room to rent in someone's house. Again, prayer answered, "The Lord provided." So we loaded up his Honda Civic and drove to California for the 2016-2017 academic year. Jordan wanted, I can't stress that enough, Jordan wanted to work in Division One athletics. However, the hiring season typically is May to July. Jordan wouldn't graduate until August. Would the Lord provide? It was August, and Jordan had no opportunities. He was interested in a new position being considered at CBU, Events Manager in the Athletic Department, but the position wasn't approved for the budget. So I flew out to California and drove back to Indiana with Jordan. Jordan applied for some college jobs, but nothing materialized. He worked at a local YMCA, but felt the stress that comes with, wondering if the Lord would provide what he desired most. Lisa and I prayed earnestly that the Lord would give our son the desires of His heart. We wondered, "Would the Lord provide?" But fall turned into winter and winter into spring, and Jordan was still working at the Y, feeling dejected and stressed. Jordan and Brian kept in touch. Would the college president approve the Events Manager position for the next year's budget? Brian said it was unlikely, but then one day Brian texted Jordan with the news that the president had approved the position. The only caveat is another graduate student was applying for the position, and Brian, who was Jordan's advocate, had to pull himself out of the decision-making process due to conflict of interests. Would the Lord provide? As it turned out, the other applicant landed a different job, and Jordan went through the month-long interview process, eventually being invited to fly out to an interview with the president and was offered the job as Assistant Manager of Athletic Events at a Division One university in California. For us, it was a hallelujah moment. Jehovah Jireh showed up with the perfect job at the perfect place at the perfect time. More recently, CBU promoted Jordan to Associate Director of Facilities and Game Management. It's his dream job, and I couldn't be more thankful and I couldn't be prouder. God's provision was perfect. God's provision was part of a faith-building process for Jordan and for all of us. God's provision is and will be a testimony for current and future generations. So I want you to just remember, the Lord sees your faith and can provide for your need, and with this good news in mind, let's consider three truths about the Lord's provision. First, the Lord, the Lord's provision is always perfect. You may need a little bit of time and hindsight to look at that, but you will come away with the Lord's provision is always perfect. Many of you can praise the name of Jehovah Jireh. You have a litany of provisions which have come from His hand at the perfect time and the perfect way, at the perfect place. Some, if not all of you, students wanted to go to college, but you wondered if you would be accepted. You applied and you prayed and you waited until eventually a letter arrived stating that you had been accepted to Huntington University. I remember what that moment felt like to my younger son, Quinn, when we brought the letter down to him. It's just a sense of relief. I'm accepted. God saw you and provided the perfect answer at the perfect time. But how are you going to pay for college? Where will the funds come from? You applied for grants and you prayed, but you wondered in the waiting, would you get all of it, some of it, any of it, none of it? And then the announcement came that you were the recipient, and God saw you and provided you the perfect amount at the perfect time. Some of you, like my son, were desperate for a job after months or possibly years, as in his case, of applying and interviewing, and Jehovah saw you. He heard you, and He provided a job for you in the perfect field at the perfect time. Some of you prayed especially hard for a spouse, and the Lord provided the perfect person in the perfect way, at the perfect time. You cherish the one who has obviously come from your, from God's hand. Some of you parents can identify with Abraham and Sarah. You wanted a family but struggled to conceive, and so you prayed to Jehovah, and He eventually provided the perfect way at the perfect time, whether naturally or through adoption. And some of you wanted a home. You prayed, you researched, you toured, you put in offer after offer after offer, and the Lord saw you and provided the perfect home at the perfect price at the perfect time. And you love telling the story of how that came to be. Remember, Jehovah Jireh's provisions are always perfect. Second, the Lord's provision is presented to us as part of the process. It's not lost on me that God seems to delight in the 11th hour. That's because the Lord is up to far more than just giving us what we want. And sometimes we need to be prepared for the blessing, or we run the risk of valuing the blessing over the blesser, which is always idolatry. God provides at the, at the time He does so that we might cultivate deeper faith and trust in Him. So I just want to encourage you, take the initiative and step out in faith. Apply for the job. Ask the girl out, for crying out loud. Send out resumes and applications. Save your money. Put an offer on the home. But notice an important rhythm. Our obedient steps open our eyes to look for what's coming from the hand of God. Abraham was obedient first and then received from Jehovah Jireh, and he stepped out in faith, which naturally opened his eyes to watch for Jehovah's hand with every step he took. Step out in faith, live in obedience, and stay vigilant for the provision. And third, the Lord's provision will encourage and motivate future generation of God's followers. We are required to praise the name of the Lord regularly, and often recalling and telling our own stories is an important process, an important part of making His testimony known to others. People need to know the fact that the Lord is real, that the Lord is interested, that the Lord is engaged. My sons and future grandchildren need to know, "The Lord will provide." Your friends need to know that He is interested and real, that, and the lost need to know and that about Christ in our community and throughout the world, they need to know that the Lord actively is engaged. Not many things are as convincing as show-and-tell proof of what has come from the hand of God. So boldly and gladly tell your story. Hold nothing back. The Lord saw your need. He met your need with the right thing in the right way at the right time. So I encourage you to take some time this afternoon, this week, to consider how the Lord has provided for you, then write your own Jehovah Jireh story and share it with someone. God has provided for you so that you can tell your story of His glory. In a few minutes, moments, the Psalmist is going to invite you to make a call. But before you grab your cell phone and make any call, I want to ask you a couple questions. What is your need today? Are you desperate for the Lord to provide something or someone? Have you been waiting for what seems like a long, long time for the Lord to answer? Keep at it. Recall past provisions or stories of past provisions from those who live inside your relational orbit. Persevere, walking obediently. Trust that God is good and knows exactly what He is doing. Remember, you're never without hope because you're never without help. So go ahead. Make the call as Psalm 34, 6 invites. "This poor man called, and the Lord heard him and saved him out of all his troubles." Yet I do wonder if there's any, if there's another more important call that some of you could make today, or make sooner rather than later, to fix the trouble you may be in. We love our partnership with Huntington University as a denomination. We love that it's Christ Scholarship and Service, and we believe that whosoever will may come, especially when it comes to the call of God for salvation in their life. This is who we are, and this is what we believe is the greatest need of every person living or sitting in this place. The greatest trouble confronting humanity is an all-encompassing sinfulness, which leads to all sorts of dysfunction on earth and ultimately to eternal death. But here's the good news. God is never without the good news. The Lord has provided a way for you to escape that trouble, because on a hill 2,000 years ago, quite possibly in the vicinity of the mount where Abraham sacrificed a ram hundreds of years earlier, a perfect, spotless lamb was sacrificed on our behalf. Jesus Christ, God's one and only Son, is that Lamb of God, and He died in your place and for your sins so that you won't have to. Three days later, He rose victoriously from the dead, because that's what God can do. He ascended to heaven where He sits right now, actively interceding on behalf of His followers until He is sent for His return. And though this gift of forgiveness and eternal life is unmerited, He does ask you to make a call, if you will, a confession where you respond to His grace by faith. It could be as simple as this call. "Lord, have mercy upon me, a sinner. I humbly and gladly accept the gifts of Your forgiveness." I humbly and gladly accept the gifts of Your forgiveness and the Holy Spirit in my life." Go ahead and make the call. "Lord, have mercy on me, a sinner. I humbly and gladly accept Your gifts of forgiveness and the Holy Spirit in my life." And if you're wondering, folks, if it's too late, today is the day of salvation. This is what God said in 2 Corinthians 6:2, "In the time of My favor I heard You, and in the day of My salvation I helped You." I tell you, now is the time of God's favor. Now is the day of salvation. So go ahead and make the call. "Lord, have mercy upon me, a sinner. I humbly and gladly accept the gifts of Your forgiveness and the Holy Spirit in my life." Folks, He will provide. He's done it before. He can do it again. He's done it for billions. He can do it for you. So go ahead and make the call. His name is Jehovah Jireh, and He is the Lord who is ready to provide. Amen, and may God bless you, and have a great day.